Everyone here tonight, we've got a good crowd. This is April 1st, 2013, City Council meeting in Morganton. At this time, I'll call on Sheldon Stevenson to lead us with our invocation. Steve?
Good evening. I think you probably know that I've been in Morganton now about 20 years. And I've tried all that time to integrate myself into the life of the city, including the police and the hospitals and hospice and all that kind of thing. And it's a real pleasure for me always to be here as part of the City Council. I just enjoy it so much. This evening, I'd just like to hold up before you the new Pope. And I think he's going to be a real good influence internationally as well as interreligiously. He's taken the name Francis, which is after Francis of Assisi, and he has imitated his life to seemingly strong stress after St. Francis. I wonder how many of you know Francis of Assisi? Have you ever read about him? Or I don't see any really good nodding heads here, but if you haven't done it, you should do it. It's really an interesting person. He was a person that was always very humble, and he worked in the kitchen, washing dishes, and didn't talk to very much to people. He just loved the birds and the flowers, the neat natural things, the mountains and the clean waters. He always talked about the clean waters and so on. The natural kind of thing that was there. We even have a hymn in our hymnal, which was written by him. And he used to go out through the world helping the poor people, helping the hungry people. A really a great person. So I'm glad to see that the new Pope has been calling himself after Francis. I think if you have been viewing the news, you can see that the new Pope now, Francis, is doing a lot of interesting, unique things. For example, he doesn't live in a big building. He lives in an apartment. He walks on the streets of the town and greets all the people individually. He wears common clothes like, you know, most everybody else. He washed the feet of women the other day. It's just something that's identifying with humanity, which I think is a very important thing. And so I was thinking about that as something probably he has learned or he has inherited from St. Francis. And so what I'd like to do is have our prayer, a prayer of St. Francis this evening. So may we pray. Lord, make me an instrument of thy peace. Where there is hatred, let me so love. Where there is injury, pardon. Where there is doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is darkness, light. Where there is sadness, joy. Oh God, grant that I may not so much seek to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love. For as in giving that we receive, it is in pardoning that we are pardoned, and as in dying that we give ourselves to a life that's eternal. Amen.
Thank you, Steve. Introduction of our council. On my far right is Dr. Alfred Hamer, City Councilman, City Councilman Forrest Fleming, City Attorney Lou Avina, Mel Cohen, your mayor, Sally Sandy, our City Manager, Sidney Simmons, City Councilman, John Cantrell, City Councilman, Kelly Russell, Recording Secretary, and Becky Brinkley interpreting for our deaf community. At this time, I want to read a resolution honoring retiring city employee Charles Timothy Mull. Tim, if you'd come to the podium, and I'm going to read the resolution, and I'll come present it to you in just a second. Resolution honoring Charles Timothy Mull. Whereas Charles Timothy Mull was employed by the City of Morganton as a laborer in the Public Works Street Department on July 12, 1984, promoted to concrete finisher in the Public Works Street Department on August 21, 1986, transferred to the position of Animal Shelter Attendant, Public Safety Department on June 13, 1994, changed to Animal Control Officer in the Public Safety Department on June 6, 1997. And whereas Charles Timothy Tim Mull has faithfully served the City of Morganton in the Public Works, Street, and Public Safety Departments, and is given of his time and efforts for the benefit of the citizens of Morganton for 30 years. And whereas Charles Timothy Tim Mull retired from the City of Morganton as Animal Patrol Officer in the Public Safety Department on April 1, 2013. And whereas the Morganton City Council wishes to officially recognize the contributions of Charles Timothy Tim Mull and express their appreciation for a job well done. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City of Morganton, the mayor present this resolution to Charles Timothy Tim Mull. Adopted this the first day of April, 2013. Mel Cohen, Mayor, Sally Sandy, City Clerk. All in favor, say aye. Tim, you've done a fabulous job in a tough position. And I know, I've told you many times, I want to present this to you. Godspeed, and I hear you'll be coming back in a short time and helping us out in certain times of the month. I greatly appreciate this, and here's some money for you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. You can say anything you'd like to.
All right. I'd like to thank the City of Morganton for the 30 years. It's been, if one word could sum it up, colorful. And to all the departments of the city, the city employees are the best people. And to them and City Council, my door is always open. You're always welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. And without a doubt, I mean what I say, it was a tough job. Sometimes it had a bite to it, didn't it? Brooks?
I want to present to you the RP3 plaque, the Reliable Public Power Provider in the City of Morganton and APPA. Do an excellent job. Thank you, Brooks, and tell your guys that I greatly appreciate what they do, day and night, and good weather and bad weather for us. Thank you. You can say anything you'd like now.
Appreciate it. This award from the American Public Power Association is called RP3. It stands for Reliable Public Power Provider. It's a 39-point checklist covering system improvement, system reliability, safety, and career development. This is our third award to have in City of Morganton since 2007. My predecessor, Dan Brown, had a lot to do with this getting it this third time around. It comes out every two years, so we are looking at six years running as being recognized in the nation as one of the top 100 municipalities in the country as providing reliable public power. And it's a recognition of the hard work and dedication of my department crews, from Sybil to the meter readers to all the crewmen. It's also a reflection on the City Council, the mayor, and the city manager of your support by providing the funds necessary we need to keep the system up and running. I just wish, thank you, and very proud and very honored to receive this award.
Thank you, Brooks. Thank you. Please tell all the guys, we appreciate it.
I sure will.
Okay? Thank you a lot. Sally, you're on.
Want me to go first? Okay. I wanted to report to everyone, this past week, several of us had the opportunity to go to Raleigh for Town Hall Day. And we had the opportunity to spend the day in and around the General Assembly, to meet with some of the leadership there, to hear their ideas and their plans, to meet with our local representatives, and to talk about issues that affect the citizens of Morganton and the decisions that are being made in Raleigh that affect them. Told John Cantrell, he went with us, that it was one of the better Town Hall days, I felt like. I felt like we were greeted well and talked to with respect, and I think that our local representatives are listening to the issues that we see happening here and the changes that are coming, and how that is going to affect our ability to deliver the services that we deliver in Morganton. That's one part. The second part that I want to talk about, I find very disturbing, and there are a lot of changes happening in Raleigh, and there are a lot of bills being proposed each and every day that affect how the city gets revenues to deliver the services that we deliver. A couple of those things, there is a whole new, I guess you would call it a mantra, that's being set up, where we are now finding ourselves, there is a real battle between urban and rural North Carolina happening in Raleigh. It's happening in the country, but I'm experiencing it on our behalf in Raleigh. And the issues are becoming rural versus urban. And the population is growing in the urban parts of the state, and the representation of that is growing, and the ideas and the way that we're going to do business in the future are becoming more urban. And we are still very rural. And I am concerned what this means for us in the future. One of those examples, there is a bill that has been introduced by a senator, and he's out of Mecklenburg County, and basically that bill eliminates all of the state-collected revenues that are collected in Raleigh on behalf of the citizens here that comes back to us in the form of reimbursements. That includes a beer and wine tax, I mean, not an inventory tax, a utility franchise tax, cable franchise tax. That includes, and his bill is also privileged license taxes and those kinds of things. All of those have been slated in his bill to be eliminated. To put that in perspective for everyone, last year, fiscal year ended June 30, 2012, those revenues represented $1.7 million to the City of Morganton. If you take that as it relates to our tax rate today, if we did not have those dollars, we would have two choices. We could either eliminate that much in service, and in those services, people, we're talking about general fund services, we're talking about police and fire, recreation, we're talking about code inspections, we are talking about that kind of service. Or we could raise our tax rate 11.3 cents to make up for that. And that's what that means. And all of this is being talked about in the name of tax reform. And I don't want to make this necessarily a political debate, but the way that tax reform is being considered, and I'm not saying that tax reform is a bad idea, as we move toward the idea that sales tax is going to become the tax, and sales tax is going to replace all of these other revenue streams that are taxes. Then what happens with that is when that sales tax goes up, and everybody's paying it, under the way that that happens today, when those sales taxes go to Raleigh, and they redistribute back to the communities, the part that comes back here, number one, a lot of it is based on the county in which the sale happened. Now, we are getting ready to correct some of that here with the new Morganton Heights Shopping Center being built, because we certainly hope we're going to recapture sales tax dollars that are currently being spent in Catawba County and other surrounding counties. But if, number one, the sale has to happen here, then you've got to have what people want here for the sale to happen. Then the money goes to Raleigh, Raleigh takes their share, then they send back a piece of it to the community to support our infrastructure and the services that we provide here. What happens with that now, it comes, and Burke County gets the lion's share of that. So if we're going to do this new tax restructure, and it's going to be based in the future on sales taxes, and all these other things are going to go away, then when that lion's share of revenue comes to the counties, that'd be all 100 counties in North Carolina, I'll ask you these questions. Is the county going to pick up the kind of services that the city provides with those dollars? Because the city's not going to have those dollars anymore if that happens to spend on our services. Is the county going to pick up the recreation? Is the county going to pick up supporting the infrastructure for the Commerce Center of the county? Because if the city crumbles because we don't have any money to support services and the nice amenities and things that have become what makes our community, then Burke County will not survive either. And the other counties in North Carolina obviously will have some of the same challenges. I find this very concerning, because I don't know how all of this happens, and we find a way to make the numbers work, and that we ask the people who are elected, who sit up here, to make decisions, to provide the services to the people in this community that they deserve and that they want for a dollar that they can afford. And these are really big issues, and it's something that I'm not sure most people realize all this is going on. I mean, you may hear it on the news, you may read it in the newspaper. I know, did you bring in the Charlotte Observer and the headlines over the weekend? We are currently in a situation where the revenue stream for the cities in North Carolina, they are under attack, and we only have so many ways to make that up, to provide the services that I think we've grown to expect. So I say that because everybody needs to be aware of that, and you need to think about that, you need to talk to your representatives and people who you have voted for, and people, whether you voted for them or not, who represent you and what is best for us and the kind of future that we want to have. And so I say that, I don't normally preach a lot from up here, but I'm very disturbed about what I see happening and what is going to happen in rural communities in the future.
She said it is plain and simple as you can say it, and it's a sad day for Burke County and the citizens across North Carolina. And hopefully, you will all tell people, and the TV will show people and tell people what went through tonight, from Sally's mouth to your ears, because it's a sad time, and it's almost going to happen. And when it happens, it's too late. Another thing that I'm going to, Sally, you got anything else?
I think that's probably enough.
The high-rise prison has been rumored for two years to be on the chopping block, but it was not done last year. Our prison system opened up a new office in neighboring county, paying rent.
In neighboring city.
Neighboring city. Neighboring city. And, you know, so they're running out of money to revitalize the Western Youth High-Rise. And it's strange how they can find money for redoing buildings and doing certain things to do whatever they want to do, but to renovate the high-rise, it's not in the cards. And all the towns in Burke County are doing a resolution, and I'm going to follow suit, a resolution supporting the Western Youth Institution. This is under the governor that said that he was going to watch over the rural counties and no economic development to rural counties over the last several years, last 11 years in Burke County. And he was going to help us. This is how we get help. Whereas the governor, Pat McCrory, proposes to close Western Youth Institution in Burke County in his 2013, 2015 budget. Whereas Western Youth employees, 378 correctional officers, supervisors, case managers, social workers, and food service personnel. And whereas the closing of the Western Youth would eliminate 323 jobs, thus increase Burke County's unemployment rate of 11%, which is one of the highest in the state of North Carolina. Whereas the impact of losing jobs will be devastating to families in a county that cannot support the loss of these jobs due to the current number of people already unemployed, along with the lack of new jobs available in Burke County. And whereas over 100 inmates ranging in age of 13 to 22 would be transferred to the adult Foothills Correctional Facility. Whereas a study published in the Journal of Crime and Justice concluded that juveniles in adult institutions are at much greater risk regarding their safety and perceived safety, and the likelihood of a youth being the victim of a violent crime increases in an adult prison. And whereas Governor McCrory voiced his concern for the small towns and rural areas of the state that continue to struggle to recover from the recession. And whereas closing the Western Youth Institution would set Burke County and all of its communities at a tremendous disadvantage in their efforts to recover the local economy. Now therefore, be it resolved that the safety and security of the youth population at the Western Youth Institute serves must be at the forefront of any decision in closing this facility and transferring these inmates to an adult facility. And based on published studies, this type of move would be harmful to the affected population. Be it therefore resolved by the City Council of the City of Morganton, that the citizens of Morganton request the state of North Carolina keep the Western Youth Institution open, and the employees and their families not to be subject to the devastating effects of losing their jobs when there are other alternatives that need to be evaluated to address the state's budget that do not put employees and families at risk. Adopted this the first day of April, 2013. Mel Cohen, Mayor, Sally Sandy, City Clerk. All in favor, say aye. This facility is in bad shape, it's been in bad shape for a number of years. Where has the money gone and not to the facility to restore floor by floor, starting at the top floor? Untold number of years have gone by where we have not used the money in the state adequately and efficiently to keep this building in good shape, realizing that the building would have to be closed to renovate it. You wonder if the state would have enough money to tear it down after it's vacated. Doubtful whether they would have enough money to do that. And we just would like to see that the facility worked on, as the kids are in the facility, start at the top floor and come down, or the bottom floor and go up. But there's ways to do it by transferring inmates to other youth institutions and rebuild that facility. But can imagine that facility standing there, all the number of years that the state has no money, they say, and how it'll look in five years, empty. We'll need to pass this on to Raleigh and the governor. Concerts, mark your calendars now. Farmer's Market opens up on Saturday, the 13th of April, 300 Beet Street, down at the railroad behind Geppetto's, from 8:00 a.m. till noon. And on Wednesday, the mini-market is April 17, the first one, from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. That's on Green and Avery Avenue. The TGI Summer Concert Series starts May 3 and runs every Friday, May, June, and July. Look for the events scheduled in the News-Herald and in the Burke Mailer soon. New this year, the Morganton Jazz Festival, Saturday, May 11, 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Great lineup of jazz musicians and authentic New Orleans-style food. Jeff Clapp, the quartet from New Orleans will head the line, Saturday's event, plus on the 10th, TGIF Night, Mojo and the Bayou Gypsies, more of the New Orleans musicians featuring Cajun and Zdeki music, I guess is what it is. Whatever. And that's going to be starting very shortly. Anything else, Sally? Council members? Okay. Power Agency.
There is, this Wednesday is the Legislative Day for Electricities, and we will have several people going back to Raleigh to spend some more time down there with the folks and to try to get across the issues that Electricities face.
Consent agenda, Sally.
The consent agenda before you tonight actually includes five individual items. The staff considers those to be non-controversial and asks that you consider them in one motion. However, if someone wants an item removed and discussed separately, we can do that. For those of you viewing at home, the items are regular minutes from the March 4 meeting, the tax releases for this month in the amount of $1,024.33, consideration of a resolution of supportive tax-exempt financing, and that deals with tax-exempt financing, or tax-exempt bonds, municipal bonds remaining as a tax exemption. There is an effort to change that, which would make our ability to issue debt more costly and not provide the same benefit to people buying those bonds. A budget amendment for the Silo Barn Project at Western Piedmont, they deposited that money with us last year, it's gone into fund balance. Now the project, we need to make an expenditure, so we need to appropriate those dollars. And then lastly, is a professional design contract and a budget amendment for a design service that we are providing for the public infrastructure portion of a Habitat project.
I make a motion, we accept the consent agenda as is.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ed Phillips, Burke County Travel and Tourism, annual tourism report.
Well, good evening, and I appreciate the opportunity to appear before you again this year and tell you a lot about what's been going on with tourism here in Burke County. And I do have a presentation that I'll go through very quickly, but I want to say one thing. I think we've heard in the last couple of years that we're in a new economy, and we really are, in all of North Carolina, all of the country, but here in Burke County especially, things that we didn't think about five or 10 years ago are now an intricate part of our economy. And tourism, that segment is huge. And as you'll see tonight, you're going to see some surprising numbers, and we're going to move forward. I think tourism is a really good opportunity for us. So let me just, I'll go quickly through some of these, some of these slides I'll skip, but I did want to readdress some things that a lot of people are unfamiliar with. But our Burke County Tourism Development Authority was created in 2007, and we have a nine-member Board of Directors. We're funded by a 6% tax that's added to your hotel, motel, and other lodging bills if you stay in a cabin here or rent a home on Lake James or in the mountains in Burke County. They collect that 6% tax and then forward that through the county to us. Our budget for this current fiscal year is approximately $291,000. We are also at the end of a Golden Leaf Grant of $328,600. Morganton and Valdez also receive a portion of the occupancy tax that we collect for tourism marketing efforts, advertising, marketing, public relations, and staffing. Morganton's piece of that is approximately $70,000 last fiscal year, and just so you'll know, we're on target to meet that in this current fiscal year. The Burke County Tourism Authority was the first TDA in North Carolina to receive a Golden Leaf Grant. 14 members of our community served on a local Golden Leaf Advisory Committee, and we were required to spend that money in three places, marketing, hospitality, training, and programming staffing for business development. We had these objectives: increase the occupancy tax revenue in Burke County, increase visitation to the Burke County Visitor Center, create new jobs directly and indirectly related to tourism, share more information with the community, like I'm doing this evening, and develop a hospitality training program. So we created some strategies that included print advertising, social media, and internet websites, television, public relations. Our print advertising included such things as the ad you see before you, "North Carolina's Greatest Adventures," all have one thing in common, their starting place. And this was a key on our great outdoor experience here in all over Burke County. We also promoted our mysterious Brown Mountain Lights quite successfully, and they're still a mystery. We don't know where they came from or where they go, but they're real, and I love them to death because it gives us all kinds of publicity, some of the publications that we advertise it in. So our social media or website saw 109% increase in visits from 2011 to 2012, more than double. And we also have a Facebook page, Burke County Tourism, that we post important things on on a weekly basis. We have billboards on I-40 that promote the Brown Mountain Lights Adventure Headquarters, which is our visitor center. This billboard just recently changed to the Pisgah National Forest and Lake James Visitor Center. And we are now heavily promoting this year our great outdoor recreation and all the fun things to do here. We also have a TV commercial, and I'm going to pause for just one moment, and I'd like to show you this television commercial that ran promoting Burke County with a Morganton theme.
... by putting stray cats to work. The White House released a special video message from the President.
Back into history. And can a day trip stay with you the rest of your life? Spend the day in Morganton, the trailhead of western North Carolina, a collection of the most unusual and jaw-droppingly beautiful trails around. Build your day trip at trailheadwnc.com.
So we were promoting the Morganton as kind of the entranceway for Burke County. That specific TV commercial ran in the Greater Charlotte Market on Time Warner Cable, and we spent about $30,000. we spent about $30,000 in the summer of 2011 with that commercial. I'll tell you a little more about that commercial in just a moment. It was a great commercial, but the first year, we reached over 15 million people with our media. This past year, we dropped back, we did not have the money or the funds left to run the TV again, so our audience dropped back some in 2012. Our public relations was a key part of our program, where we produced news releases, media tours, we answered media requests, which I seem to do on a daily basis now. This is a sample of a news release promoting Waldenzi and Heritage and Valdez. And we also promoted the biggest and best that Burke County has, and this is like the deepest gorge east of the Mississippi. We also have the largest state park in North Carolina with 18,000-acre South Mountain State Park. We're also the only county in North Carolina that has two state parks, so pretty important. And other things you see there, including the largest single-panel fresco at Kama in North Carolina and now since learned probably in the eastern half of the United States. This is a photo of some media folks, some travel writers and TV producers that came to Burke County, and some TV appearances that I did promoting special events here. So our marketing results, what did all this mean? We went through all of the media, the PR, and what did we get for it? And it was huge. We saw a 179% increase in visitor center traffic from 2011 to 2012. That's in the Burke Visitor Center located inside the Chamber of Commerce. We also, if you looked at all of the articles written about Morganton and Burke County, the value of that, if you'd had to purchase that space as an ad, totaled almost a half a million dollars. We had two Brown Mountain Lights symposiums, one of them occurred in this room right here, which was sold out at 125 people. More than 700 newspapers and counting have covered the Brown Mountain Lights worldwide, plus more than 3,000 websites continue to run stories on the Brown Mountain Lights. So the real numbers for the visitor center, in 2011, we had 2,470, and in 2012, that jumped to 4,433. And we look at the visitor center as kind of like our little home down there, and when you double the number of people that come into your home over a year, it's noticeable. We had to have the carpet cleaned because these people track a lot of stuff in, but we're glad they're there. In June of last year, we set a one-month, single-month record, we had 943 visitors in the visitor center. One-third of our visitors in May, June, and July last year were here because of The Hunger Games movie and visiting that. The room tax revenue, which is another measure of how we've grown in the last three years, that's grown 21.3%. We now actually collect over $300,000 in hotel tax, room tax. The Burke Visitor Center located inside the Chamber of Commerce, some photos of The Hunger Games down at Henry River Mill Village. Speaking of that, in two weeks, Hunger Game Fan Tours will be launching tours there. This is an organized, interactive tour. Last year, they had tours in Brevard at the DePont State Forest that attracted thousands of people, so we expect this year, thousands more to come to Burke County to participate in those tours. It's going to be really exciting. As we get more into that, I'll show you photos from that later. These are some, this was a Girl Scout troop that came from Huntersville up to the visitor center, they were on a Hunger Games day trip, and they all bought t-shirts and they all had lunch here in downtown Morganton. Some of the magazines that wrote about us, Lake Living, Upstate South Carolina, WNC, Fleet of the Foothills, this was an article that came out encouraging people in Charlotte to get out of their town during the Democratic National Convention and escape to the foothills. The Brown Mountain Lights we've talked about, I won't go through all of this, but for time's sake, but we did have huge symposium in this room. Our purpose for the Brown Mountain Lights symposiums and that publicity was to generate interest in our area and also to change a perspective. And one of the things that we've done with this, now when people see stories about the Brown Mountain Lights, here's one right here that came out in Sunday, November 4th in The Shard Observer, is that it's now tagged with a tagline that says Morganton. Previously, other communities such as Linville Falls and Linville, Jonas Ridge, and other places were tagged as belonged to Brown Mountain Lights. But now, for every article you see, it now has the Morganton name attached to it, and that's what we were after. We also had hospitality training, we've had about 125 folks here locally participate in an online program where they learn about Burke County, how to give directions, where the attractions are, where the visitor center is. If nothing else, they remember that we do have a visitor center and they can send folks there. That's been very successful. We also had an initiative to work with tourism businesses, and Alan Clark worked with us on that, he's a local business development consultant. We also wrote grant applications, including one single grant was awarded to Lake James Cellar Project, they went solar, so they're totally powered with solar power, which is a $225,000 grant, that was free money for them to do that. We had a craft brewing seminar at Catawba Valley Brewing with 100 participants from four states. We've also been working hard on a new hotel and a bed and breakfast project, and you'll hear more about that later, but we have been successful in one of those, and probably will be successful in both within this year. We also created the Catawba Valley Wine Trail and are working on wine tasting tours. So, as part of our Golden Leaf Project, we had to measure the number of new jobs that were created in Burke County in the last two and a half years. And so looking at new businesses and the jobs that they've brought or expanded here, we can actually measure 431 new jobs since July of 2010. This report was put together in early January, and since then, we've added other jobs. Probably by May, when our Golden Leaf Project is completely finalized, we will have over 500 new jobs in Burke County in tourism, probably 8 million plus in new capital investment, and still that maintains that 958,000 in grants and loans. Silver Fork Vineyard and Winery will hold their grand opening next Saturday, April 6th. They're located off of Patton Road, which is off of Dyson Field Road, south of Interstate 40. Incredible scenery, incredible new winery out there, the vineyard is about 15 years old. Beanstalk Journey Zip Line, these are some samples of some of the new tourism businesses that have opened up. If you haven't seen my local bakery, then you're missing a great treat there, downtown Morganton. They've done an extremely effective job marketing. If you see anybody in downtown with a pink bag or a pink box, you know exactly where they've been. And Old Country Store, Patterson's Home Furniture, The Pie Hole, recently moved location, and their business is soaring, they're now three times the number of employees they had prior to their move. Colay Art Gallery, which was voted in 2011 the best new art gallery in the United States. We have a long list of visitor events that bring people to the area, including the upcoming Red, White, and Bluegrass Festival, the GNCC Race at Steel Creek Park, which is this coming weekend, and Historic Morton Festival, and the Waldenzi and Festival in Valdez. So the conclusion of all of this was our public relations efforts were measurable, we saw articles and TV commercials and shows that came about just from the public relations. The TV ads, even though the commercial was great and everybody loved it, not one person came into the visitor center and said, "Hey, I saw your TV ad." That never happened. Billboards were mentioned by visitors, and the other thing is directional signage, and I know that there's some wayfinding initiatives in the work here, and that will be huge for us, the more easy we can make it for people to find things to do here and navigate our one-way streets, the better off they'll be and the better experience they'll have here. I'll also go ahead and tell you that we're going to have a Burke Music CD released in late October this year. This is songs that have been created and written about people and places in Burke County, and I'm real excited about that. We have a couple of Grammy Award winners that will be performing on the CD, and we'll have a concert for that. And this will be a piece that people will really treasure, I think, including songs about people like Etta Baker. There's a new Brown Mountain Lights song on there, of course. More wineries opening this year, we're working with a hiking guide and outfitter and hotel and restaurant development, so we have a lot of things going on, and I'll enter, I know it's been a really quick overview, was it six minutes?
Quick.
Was it six? Okay. So entertain any questions or...
Ed, I will tell you that our Councilman Fleming, before you came to the floor, said that you were doing one heck of a job, and, but, you know, until he, now he heard your presentation, he's speechless. But I will tell you that you have done a magnificent job since, I told you that last year when you came, and your chairman's probably not here today, but you can, she can see it on her, when they play the ad again for the festival, for the city council meeting, but you have done, since you've been here, you put us on the map, and I greatly appreciate it, and I know the city council does. Any questions, Ed?
Ed, the move from the old courthouse to the chamber office, has that been a success?
It has been, we share staff, it's a very visible location there, so I would say yes, that has been a huge success for us. The only issue we have that's of any consequence here is we don't really have ADA-compatible restroom facilities, which I'd love to see us have, but other than that, the sharing of staff, the building itself, the location, has all worked really well for us, and we share, we basically rent space from them, and then we co-share some of the cost of upkeep on the building and that type of thing. Like I said, last September, it was right after the festival, we literally had a trail that came in on the carpet from the side door there that came over, it went over to the Hunger Games exhibit, it went over to the desk, and then it went back out, and so we actually had to have that cleaned in this day after the festival back in September. It's kind of remarkable to see that and to visit with all these folks. A lot of things I could go into that we really don't have time for here tonight, but we see an uptick, you know, just in the office, we see so many people looking to relocate here. It's truly remarkable, I see it every week, people love this area, they're here looking for homes, either on Lake James or in town, they're early retirees. We actually have, and I tell this story over, Bill and Christie Steiner, that came here and researched and found Burke County and found Morganton, and he was the state Main Street Coordinator for South Carolina, and he could live anywhere he wanted to, and he fell in love with this area, him and his wife, and live here, and we see that literally every week, and that's a true pleasure in the job is working with those folks.
Thank you. Any other questions? Ed, again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And hopefully next year will be as good.
It will be.
Not better.
I, see, I promised that.
New business, consideration of creating and appointing members of a utility committee, Sally?
For years, the city council has used the standing committee method of researching and investigating issues and ideas, and helps us out in dealing in a little more detail in some of the issues that are coming before you and that are being dealt with by the staff on a day-to-day basis. You have always functioned, at least in my 20 years here, with a finance committee, a personnel committee, and a streets committee. As times have changed, regulations have changed, water, sewer, electric, and cable, internet, and telephone, all utilities for the city, we are having more and more issues that come up relative to utilities. And recommend that you consider creating a standing committee to deal with utilities, to delve into some of those issues, as we're looking at things to do in the future, better ways to manage those operations, ways to deal with regulations, those kinds of things, and would ask that you consider appointing a standing committee for that.
First motion to create a utilities committee to be a regular standing committee.
Second.
Have a motion second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And since I'm going to be the appoint, mayor appointed, people will be Councilman Forrest Fleming and Sidney Simmons to the utilities committee. No motion needed on that. Consideration of an offer to purchase certain real property on College Street, Sally?
At your March 4th city council meeting, you passed a resolution stating your intent to sell the city's tract of almost six acres located on South College Street, the property across from Kama next to Public Safety. The idea was to sell that, and it is intended for the development of a retirement community that would be especially designed to serve the deaf and blind communities, not solely, but designed to accommodate for that. That was the first step in the process. You adopted that resolution, the staff did indeed collect a 5% deposit from the outfit that is looking to purchase that, advertise that, March 6, 2013, in the News Herald, had a 10-day period in which an upset bid could have been received, and we did not receive such a bid. So the proposal stands at the purchase of that property for $550,000. This would be the second step for you to consider a contract of sale to the Senior Deaf and Blind Community, Inc., of this property. The basic contract sets up a 12-month period in which that group would have the opportunity, they would basically have an option on the property, to explore their project, get funding, and there is a clause in there that allows if sufficient progress is being made, a request of an extension of up to six months at your discretion for the project.
Okay.
I move to approve and enter into a contract of sale for real property located at 500 and 502 South College Street with the Senior Deaf and Blind Community Incorporated.
Second.
Have the motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next item is consideration of a contract for sale of property located on Kirksey Drive, the 9/11 Communication Center, Sally?
This is a piece of property that the city has owned for years, and at your December 5th, 2011 meeting, you declared that property surplus, it's a vacant tract of land, we estimated at that time it was about 17 acres, it's since been surveyed, and is indeed 16.787 acres. At that time, we were declaring that surplus in order to move forward with the county on the construction of the new county 911 Communication Center. This basically is a contract for sale of that property to the county, it says that we will close on this property, this calls for a June 30th, 2013 closing, they are moving forward, getting ready to send out bids and solicit bids for the construction of that facility, and looking at selling that to them for $2,000 an acre, that comes to $33,574. And the way that we had agreed in a memorandum of understanding for that is rather than the county paying that, the city would accept that as a credit against the dollars we will owe them for the operation of that center once it is up and running.
Make a motion to approve a contract for sale and purchase of real property located on Kirksey Drive to Burke County.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Consideration of a timber sale agreement with Kay Petit Logging, 9/11 Communication Center property, and budget amendment, Sally?
This is referring to the same piece of property that you've just agreed to sell to the county for $2,000 an acre. There is some nice timber located on that property, and we have taken the proper steps in bidding that out and trying to get several folks able to timber that property to give us quotes. We are, did accept, well, we had actually three bids on the property, one did not follow through, we ultimately received two, and recommend that you consider awarding to Kay Petit Logging in the amount of $22,600. The timber deed does indicate that they understand there's a time limit that this property needs to be timbered in time for the county to begin their construction project and that sort of thing, and also that the property would be, they'd use best practices when timbering it, and that we would turn that over to the county in a manner that would be acceptable for their construction project.
Have two motions, guys.
The motion to approve and authorize city manager to enter into a timber sales agreement with Kay Petit Logging for tract to approximately 17 acres on Kirksey Drive.
Second.
Have a motion second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Next is a motion to approve a budget amendment to appropriate receipt of funds from the Kirksey Drive Timber Sale and the transfer of these funds from the general fund to the Capital Reserve Fund for future use.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion of that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consideration of Main Street Loan Agreement, Sally?
Several years ago, you'll recall, in the stimulus money years, we received a Main Street Solutions grant, and that was to stimulate and create business and create new jobs in downtown Morganton. As a part of that proposal at that time, we set up a portion of that initial grant in a revolving loan fund, and have loaned out, as per the requirements in that, to several businesses in downtown, and they have been paying back that money. The reason we set up that loan fund then was so that we would generate income over the next several years to the next several years to come back in, to allow us to create more loans in the downtown area and continue with the original state dollars to hopefully create additional jobs and employment in downtown Morganton. We have a little bit over $31,000 accumulated back in that fund now, and know of one project that is getting ready to start in downtown. It is actually the outfit and upgrade at the current sub-club location, and are recommending that you consider a $10,000 loan out of these dollars for that outfit. And there's a loan agreement and everything. It follows the same format in which we have done the others, and looks at taking collateral on the equipment in the business. And you have two things. If you want to move forward with this, you would approve the loan agreement and a budget amendment, because basically those monies come and sit in a fund specifically for this, so you have to appropriate those to spend them this year.
Move we approve the Main Street Loan Agreement with the Sub-Club.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion. All in favor say aye. Opposed?
Make a motion to approve a budget amendment to appropriate funds for a Main Street Fund.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion. All in favor say aye. Consideration of a resolution authorizing an application for a Main Street Solutions Fund Grant, Sally?
Okay. Since the first round was successful and we actually have accomplished what we set out to do, several years later, the Department of Commerce had a second round of grant monies available. We did not apply for those. This is their third round of grant dollars, and they have some money available. An entity is allowed to apply for a maximum grant of $200,000, and that is what we are asking to apply for. It is another grant that would again be used to generate jobs and create new jobs in downtown. This particular time, we would not have a loan component of this. It would be strictly for grants to property owners for outfit and upgrades to their properties based on new employment that would happen as a result of that. In order to do this, we need a resolution from you that authorizes us to make application to see if we are successful in getting the dollars. Ultimately, each grant agreement that would come before you would be approved on its own conditions. So you're not actually approving the individual grants, you're approving us applying for the dollars from the state.
It's the motion to adopt a resolution authorizing an application for a Main Street Solutions Fund Grant.
Second.
Have the motion. We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Members of the council, I would like to make sure y'all are aware and need to come to the Citizen of the Year banquet that's going to be held on Tuesday, April 30th at 6:00 PM at the Community House. Strongly urge to come and support our HRC, our Human Relations Commission. Two years ago, we were there, complete the whole council. Please let Kelly or Diane Stewart of the HR Department know, but we need a good turnout. Anything else from the city council members?